Meeting of June fourteenth, twenty twenty-two, the DuPage County Board to order. May I ask, please, would would Member Jim Zay lead us in the pledge? And then I'm going to ask everyone if you'd remain standing for a moment of silence and then the invocation. Member Zay.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we begin today's proceedings, I'd like to take a moment to remember former DuPage County State's Attorney and Illinois Attorney General Jim Ryan, who passed away Sunday. Jim was a friend. He was a dedicated public servant from his service as DuPage County State's Attorney to his tenure as the Illinois Attorney General. He was a passionate advocate for the rights of children, and he devoted his life to doing what he believed was right. We thank him for his service to DuPage County and the state of Illinois, and we will keep his family in our prayers. I'd also like to ask that we keep Congressman Sean Caston in our prayers this morning as his family is mourning the tragic loss of his daughter Gwen. And so I would ask for a moment of silence in memory of Jim Ryan and Gwen Caston. The invocation this morning will be delivered by Pastor Scott Howington from the Pleasant Hill Community Church in Wheaton. Pastor Howington.
Let's pray. And Father, we do remember the families that we've just mentioned, the Caston family and the Ryan family, as they are grieving and we lift them up to you. We pray for your comfort. We come before you this morning grateful for the blessing of living in DuPage County. I thank you for each person in this room as they represent the citizens of this county. And I thank you for the many employees of DuPage County that day in and day out care for all the needs of our county. The Holy Scriptures tell us that you've ordained government and that we as citizens are to obey the governing authorities. And so as this meeting continues this morning, I pray for each member of the board, and I ask that you would grant each one wisdom to govern amid the conflicting interests and issues of our times, a sense of welfare and the true needs of our people. Grant them a keen thirst for justice and righteousness. Grant each one confidence in what is good and fitting. Grant each one the ability to work together in harmony, even when there is honest disagreement, and grant each one personal peace in their lives and joy in their task. I pray for the agenda set before them today. Please give an assurance of what would please you and what would benefit those who live and work in and around DuPage County. May you bless the DuPage County Board this morning. May you bless the many women and men who work day in and day out for the good of this county. May you bless the more than nine hundred thousand people who call DuPage County home on this day. Almighty God, hear our prayers.
Mr. Deputy Clerk, would you be kind enough, please, to call the roll?
Member Chaplin.
Here.
Member Chavez. Member Covert.
Here.
Member Desart. Member DeCiani.
Here.
Member Ekoff.
Here.
Member Garcia.
Here.
Member Hart. Member Kuduski. Member LaPlante. Member Ozog.
Here.
Member Pachalsky. Member Renahan.
Here.
Member Rutledge.
Here.
Member Shorzy. Member Selman. Member Tornatori.
Here.
And Member Zay.
Here. Okay, we have a quorum. We do have a procedural matter here. There's been a request to allow remote participation from Member Covert and DeCiani under the section seven A of the Open Meetings Act. If a quorum of the members of the public body is physically present, the majority of the public body may allow a member of that body to attend the meeting by other means if the member is prevented from physically attending because of personal illness or disability, employment purposes, or the business of the public body, a family or other emergency. Is there a motion to allow Members Covert and DeCiani? There's a motion, a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. The ayes have it. Welcome to the meeting, Mr. DeCiani and Member Covert. Onto the order of Chairman's report. First and foremost, we've got a presentation here from the DuPage Historical Museum. I see the, we have Michelle and Michael. Michael, he's got his summer attire there, looking very, very ready for a picnic. We welcome Michelle Podkova, manager of the DuPage County Historical Museum, and Michael Bernard, outstanding executive director of the Wheaton Park District, to present the Historical Museum's annual report. The museum has provided copies of this report, and Michelle joins us with a review and a look ahead. So take it away, Michelle.
During year two of the COVID-19 pandemic, I am proud to say that the museum was able to balance their budget again. Balancing the budget during two of the most difficult years in museum history is a great feat, and we are grateful for our parent organizations, DuPage County Board and the Wheaton Park District, as well as our organizational supporters like the DuPage Foundation, Wheaton Bank and Trust, and dedicated patrons who have helped us on this journey. In general, the museum saw doubling of more, doubling or more of its numbers in almost every category in 2021 in comparison to 2020. We had started off the year closed because of the pandemic for a couple weeks, and then when we opened again, it was just two of our normally five employees through, up until the summer, when we got a couple more employees back. And then we are proud to say in 2022, we just hired our fifth remaining open physician. So we're back to full staff now, and we're very happy about that. Some highlights from the 2021 report include more than double of the amount of visitors and on track to double that again this year. Our total reach more than doubled. This total reach is every touch that the museum has. This includes searches on our online database for artifacts. This includes virtual programming. It includes watching the virtual tours that we have on our website, as well as all the outreach tables, program attendance, visitors, rentals. So every touch that the museum has. Our total donations were over eleven thousand. We balanced the budget with seven thousand dollars in surplus. We had an educational reach of thirteen hundred, which again is more than doubled from 2020. A rental income of seven thousand, which has almost completely rebounded. And similar to other years, we had nearly fifty donations to our permanent collection, to your permanent collection, the county owns the collection, with over two hundred new artifacts. And then also, our online collection database remains a way to connect with people who are at home or researching in the middle of the night during our closed hours, and we have seen increases in that. As I mentioned, we had lots of changes already in 2022. We are on our way to doubling all of those numbers again, making us closer to full recovery from COVID-19. I would like to introduce our new curator, Emily O'Brien. Emily comes to us with an education and experience in museum studies and curation, as well as some experience with the German language. And as I mentioned, we hired our fifth full-time member at the front desk, our third full-time member at the front desk, making our team of five full again, first time in over two years. So we're hitting the ground running, starting to crawl out of that survival mode and back into our growth mode. We would like to thank the Board for their continued dedication and support of the museum's mission of stewardship, education, and community engagement. And there's always a standing invitation for any Board members or county employees. If they want a tour of the museum, Emily and I would be happy to show you around. Just email or give us a call. Does anyone have any questions?
I'm just, you've done such a marvelous job, you and Michael, and it's such a fabulous asset, the Historic Museum. But I've asked this question before, and I'm just curious. I still not clear, are you, Member Garcia? DuPage is supposedly named after Pierre Dupage, a French fur trader from some time ago. But we don't really know much about Pierre Dupage. I mean, did he hang around Joliet? And I mean, who were his contemporaries? What did he do? What did he like to eat? Where did he, where did he frequent? What were his activities? I mean, I'm just sort of curious. It's a historical chapter in DuPage County history, but we know so little about Pierre Dupage. Do you feel that same sort of hole in your understanding of our history?
So French fur trappers by nature move around and follow the furs.
Is there a good picture of him somewhere that I could look at?
I have not seen a picture.
Does he? reincarnation? Maybe that's why I feel so motivated. There's Pierre Dupage is inside me. I'm kind of kidding you about it, but I, I.
It would be great if we stumbled upon a diary.
It would be fabulous if we knew something about the person whose name is DuPage County. Wouldn't that be nice if we kind of knew a little something about it? Member Desart.
Thank you. Michelle, I just wanted to say you do a fabulous job. I had occasion to come over to the Historical Society a couple months ago.
She doesn't want to talk about Pierre Dupage.
Pardon me?
Do you like, want to talk about Pierre Dupage?
I don't. Maybe he hung out with Joliet or Joe Naper, I don't know. But I just want to congratulate you on the great work that you do.
He does a great job.
We had a private, personal tour from Michelle a couple of months ago, and it's just amazing the work that you do and the work that you have done being so short of staff. Now I'm glad to see that you're finally up to five people again. So I just want to say kudos to you. Chairman, I don't know anything about Dupage either. I'm so sorry.
We'll keep working on it.
Yeah, all right. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Okay, well, thank you so much, Michelle and Michael, for the wonderful work you do. Thank you. God bless you.
Thank you.
Onto the order of Chairman's remarks. On your agenda for approval this morning is a contract being recommended by our ad hoc committee on diversity and inclusion to conduct a disparity study. I want to thank those folks, Ashley and Sadia and Greg Hart. Our goal is to determine if inequities exist among minorities, women, and disadvantaged business enterprises in contracting opportunities with DuPage County. Now, all of you know that we embrace and practice a merit selection process. However, if a disparity exists, we, among minorities, women, and disadvantaged businesses, we want to establish goals, goals, to increase participation of minority women-owned businesses, disadvantaged businesses in contracting opportunities, goals. So as we continue to work toward our goal of making DuPage County the best place to live, work, and raise a family, it's important to ensure we are promoting diversity and being inclusive in our decision-making process. I want to thank our staff, again, committee co-chairs Covert and Chavez, and the entire Committee on Diversity and Inclusion for their hard work in moving this proposal forward. I also wanted to provide you with a brief update on DuPage Community Transformation Partnership Grants. Kind of a mouthful, but you know that that represents the partnership that we have with DuPage Foundation. Earlier this year, we provided ten million dollars to the DuPage Foundation to provide grants to county social service nonprofits to help residents who have been seriously impacted by COVID-19. This includes programs focusing on food insecurity, housing instability, mental health, substance abuse, and more. I'm pleased to announce that the foundation's grant committee is meeting later this week to select the first round of short-term grants. These grants will have a positive lasting difference on our families who've been hit hardest by the pandemic, so stay tuned for more information on that. And speaking of making a difference, the DuPage Care Center Foundation will host its annual golf outing fundraiser on June twenty-third at Prairie Landing Golf Club. I heard you got a great golf swing, Member Desart, so I hope to see you out there. If you plan on attending, you may want to bring another pair of socks in case you get a hole in one. All proceeds from the event will benefit the DuPage Care Center. They call that a pun. All proceeds from the event will benefit the DuPage Care Center to support the more than three hundred residents who have cognitive, physical, or medically complex challenges. Monies raised from this event will help improve the quality of life for our residents, many of whom are veterans. I've attended this event for many years, and I encourage all of you to play or at least stop by for lunch or dinner. Certainly make a donation online. To make a reservation for this great cause, please visit dpccfoundation.org. And finally, I'm pleased to announce DuPage County has received a certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting from the Government Finance Officers Association, GFOA of the United States and Canada. This prestigious award is the highest form of recognition in governmental accounting and financial reporting. An impartial panel judged our comprehensive financial report for the FY 2020 budget and found it met the highest standards of the program, demonstrating the constructive spirit of full disclosure and clearly communicating our financial story. The hard work of our incredible finance team and staff in achieving this designation and their commitment to the highest accounting and financial standards is most commendable. Congratulations to Chief Financial Officer Jeff Martinovich, Deputy CFOs Jennifer Sin and Mary Catherine Wells, and their entire staff for their ongoing dedication and service to this county. I want to give them a round of applause. Okay, that concludes the Chairman's report. We move on to the order of business entitled Public Comment. Few folks here seeking recognition to, I think they're here in person. So we have Peter Jordan. And Peter, as you make your way up to the podium, please keep in mind that we ask you abide by our rules. Your remarks shall be no longer than three minutes in length, and then all remarks shall not exceed thirty minutes. So please proceed, sir. Peter Jordan from Carroll Stream.
I'll do my best, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate the opportunity to speak as a taxpayer of DuPage County and a resident of Carroll Stream. Good morning. I had hoped to attend the last board meeting to give an outside perspective and express my opinion regarding the approximately four million in lost tax revenue on marijuana sales. However, I wasn't able to do so because of other responsibilities I needed to attend to, and that's why I'm here today. I wrestled with the idea of coming here to speak and whether what I'd have to say would fall on deaf ears or would really matter, but in the end, I felt I do myself a disservice by not sharing my two cents, which by the end of some of this may, some people may question if it's even worth that. But that's okay. I'm not here to beat a dead horse and realize what's done is done, and hopefully, moving forward, something like this doesn't happen again. The way I see it, the county clerk bears responsibility as there was no documentation to when the paperwork went out, nor any that the paperwork was received by the state. In my line of work, you document things. That's the way you know what's been done, what hasn't, what you might need to follow up on. It's called good record-keeping. That being said, I believe the Board also bears responsibility in this matter, as all monies and county budgets flow through and are approved by the Board. I have to believe projected estimates were done based on other states' marijuana tax revenue, or numbers were run to have an idea of how much revenue would be generated. And to think for two years no one followed up, not the clerk nor the Board. I can't wrap my head around it. In the end, the taxpaying residents of DuPage County are the ones that truly lose out, whether it be services lost or potential things that could have been gained to benefit those residents. I had the opportunity to view video from the past board meeting, along with the finance committee meeting, and I'm disappointed, not just with the lost revenue, but how this was handled and played out in typical political fashion, finger pointing, blaming, and name-calling. These things have become a normal, a norm in politics on the federal level, state level, and local level. Rather than working together, everything seems to be divided along political lines. When individuals work together collaboratively, it makes a difference. And believe it or not, things can get accomplished. It makes for better leaders. In ending, I'd like to quote the great late Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., who said, "We need leaders not in love with money, but in love with justice. Not in love with publicity, but in love with humanity." I ask you this today. What kind of leaders do you want to be? Thank you.
Vijaya Nadar from Chicago.
Very much. I would like to draw the attention of the DuPage County officials on how the county is inadvertently giving credence to rising fascism in India by platforming organizations like the HSS for seemingly innocuous religious events in several municipalities like the city of Naperville, city of Aurora, among others. So what is the HSS and why is it so important to investigate this deeply? A brief but important background, Indian democracy is being bulldozed every single day since a fascist militant government overrun by the RSS has seized power in India since 2014. Prime Minister Modi, who has been banned in the U.S. for more than twenty, for more than ten years, is leading the destruction while desperately projecting himself as a world leader. RSS is a saffron fascist militant group which has been dreaming of a Hindu theological state for almost a century now, and they want to achieve this at every cost, even if it means killing thousands of minorities on the way to realizing this dream. The opposition, the judiciary, media, the election process has all been wrecked in just eight years to achieve this. HSS is the international wing of this RSS, which has been insidiously fanning the dream even in the U.S. to garner the support of millions of Indian-American Hindus who have been made to believe that they are supporting the religious and social activities of several Indian right-wing organizations operating in the U.S., including the HSS. At this very moment, the Arab world has united to reprimand India for abusing Prophet Mohammed, and Modi buckled under pressure enough to sack two of his venomous representatives. This filled secular Indians with some hope of discarding the malignant fascist government. However, this short-lived victory has further endangered the minorities in India. Similarly, the West, especially the United States, cannot be a mute spectator to daily human rights violations that are being wrought in India every day. The millions of Indian-Americans living here are even less so. The HSS, to legitimize its actions, is penetrating every village, town, and city in the U.S. under the garb of celebrating Hindu festivals. As a Hindu living and working here, the fascist and militant HSS does not represent me or the majority of secular Hindus residing in this county. HSS, along with its sister organizations like the Hindu American Foundation, Friends of the BJP, World Hindu Council, in order to strengthen the fascist regime in India, are also sneaking into U.S. politics now. Congressman Raja Krishnamurti, who immigrated into this country as a child, is a perfect example of this. He is heavily supported and funded by the HSS and to show his appreciation, has even met Modi in India. As an elected representative here, he cannot feign innocence over the atrocities in India when the U.S. government is documenting the actions of the Modi government on an everyday basis. The repercussions of the fascist government here causing a Hindu-Muslim divide is ripping apart the South Asian-American voting group here, which covers all Indians, Pakistanis, Bangladeshis, Sri Lankas, and others. DuPage County is not expected to comment on the atrocities in India being played out in the name of governance, but it needs to investigate the antecedents of HSS before allowing them to platform the seemingly benign religious activities in this county. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And finally, we have Peter Friedrich from Lombard.
What if I told you that multiple municipalities throughout DuPage County, including the city of Naperville, the village of Schonberg, the city of Aurora, and several others have within the recent past, platformed and praised an organization known as the HSS? What if I told you that this has become a source of embarrassment for several of these municipalities? What if I told you that if and more likely when DuPage County is approached by this group, it will be important for county officials to understand the true nature of the HSS so as to avoid making the same mistake of platforming and praising them? What if I told you that the HSS here in America is the international wing of a fascist paramilitary back in India known as the RSS? What if I told you that the RSS in India has been banned twice for its involvement in violence, including the first time after an RSS member assassinated Gandhi? What if I told you that many HSS members here in America were previously RSS members in India? What if I told you that the HSS frequently hosts RSS officials from India to tour and inspect its units here in America? What if I told you that the HSS routinely sends its members to attend RSS training camps back in India? What if I told you that the RSS is implicated in multiple anti-Mandarin pogroms, including an anti-Muslim pogrom in 2002 in which thousands of men, women, and children were slaughtered? What if I told you that that pogrom was overseen by then-Gujarati head of state Narendra Modi and that he was banned from America because of it, but that that did not stop HSS officials in the U.S. from working tirelessly from America to get Modi elected in India? What if I told you that the RSS's earliest and most influential leaders took direct inspiration from European fascists like Mussolini and Hitler, even praising Nazi treatment of the Jews as a good model to adopt in India? What if I told you that these same RSS leaders described Christians and Muslims in India as foreign elements, internal threats, and even traitors for daring to follow the religion of their choice? What if I told you that various elected officials in the U.S., including Congressman Raja Krishnamurti, are now facing major backlash for taking donations from and rubbing shoulders with HSS officials? What if I told you that associating with the HSS and the RSS is not only politically toxic, but also contrary to the values of diversity and inclusion? If I told you any of that, would it make the county think twice or even thrice before platforming and praising the HSS? Thank you.
Okay, thank you. That concludes our public comment. Thank you for your participation. We move on to the next order of business entitled Consent. There's been a motion and a second, and I know, I've got to read it into the record, and I will do so. So there's been a motion, I seek to approve, a motion to, so, A, DuPage County Board Regular Meeting Tuesday, May twenty-four, 2022. B, Payment of Claims, five, 2022, Pay List. C, Payment of Claims, five, twenty-four, 2022, Pay List. D, Payment of Claims, five, twenty-seven, 2022, Pay List. E, Payment of Claims, six, one, 2022, Auto Debit. F, Payment of Claims, six, three, 2022, Pay List. G, Payment of Claims, six, seven, 2022, Pay List. But a motion, is there a second? Motion and a second. Mr. Deputy Clerk, please call the roll.
Member Chaplin.
Aye.
Member Chavez.
Aye.
Member Covert.
Aye.
Member Desart.
Aye.
Member DeCiani.
Aye.
Member Ekoff.
Aye.
Member Garcia.
Aye.
Member Hart.
Aye.
Member Kuduski.
Aye.
Member LaPlante.
Aye.
Member Ozog.
Aye.
Member Pachalsky.
Aye.
Member Renahan.
Aye.
Member Rutledge.
Aye.
Member Shorzy.
Aye.
Member Selman.
Aye.
Member Tornatori.
Aye.
And Member Zay.
Okay, thank you. We move on to the next order of business entitled County Board Member Ashley Selman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Briefly, by way of committee update, last week I was able to join the Health Department, where Member Tornatori, although he's President Tornatori in that room, presented our county board with a proclamation thanking us for the work we did. I'm sure all of your ears, that sounds a little bizarre because the Health Department is who did the work and saved the lives. We were just able to partner with them in that. So I want to just read quickly the part of the resolution that complimented our work. So it says, "Whereas the DuPage County Board prioritized COVID-19 funding to address the public health emergency response and recovery, provided routine opportunities to update county leaders, ferociously advocated on behalf of DuPage County residents to state leaders for appropriate testing and vaccination resources, and adopted and shared..." leaders for appropriate testing and vaccination resources, and adopted and shared key public health messages to constituents to reduce the impact of COVID-19 in our communities." So just wanted to make sure everyone knew that we were honored there and along with really a huge team of organizations we've all worked with, the state's attorney, educational organizations, public first responders. So it's really lovely presentation. So I'll make sure to give this to the county board staff so they can display it. With that, first up is CBR 233-22, a resolution, appointment of two members to the expanded Board of Review.
There's been a motion and a second. Mr. Deputy Clerk, please call the roll.
Member Solman.
Aye.
Member Tornatori. Member Zay. Member Chaplin.
Aye.
Member Chavez. Member Covert.
Aye.
Member Desart. Member DeCiani. Member Ekoff. Member Garcia. Member Hart. Member Kuduski. Member LaPlante. Member Ozog. Member Pachalsky. Member Renahan. Member Rutledge. And Member Shorzy.
Thank you. Member Solman.
Next, I move on CBR 234-22, a resolution, appointment of Glennette Turner to the DuPage County Historical Museum Foundation.
Leave is granted. Oh, sure, yes, please, Member Solman.
Thank you, Chairman. I just want everybody in this room to know that this is really something special. Glennette Tillie Turner is a DuPage County treasure. She's an historian. Her work and writings about the Underground Railroad in Illinois and specifically in DuPage County are renowned across the world. I have never been so proud to support an appointee that I am to support this appointee, Glennette Tillie Turner, to the DuPage Historical Museum. This is really special. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I quite agree. Lastly, we have CBR 235-22, a resolution, appointment of Gregory Vassi as the DuPage County Investigator General.
Leave is granted. Thank you, Member Solman. Fine report. If I may, with leave of the body, I did not read into the record one of the items that we ostensibly approved on the consent, and that is, so, item H. So with leave of the body, I'm going to go back. We'll have to take another roll call just to be on the safe side. Item H, under the order of consent, is consent item, change orders to various contracts as specified in the attached packet. Is there a motion? There's a motion and a second. Mr. Chad, would you please call the roll?
Member Chaplin. Member Chavez. Member Covert.
Aye.
Member Desart. Member DeCiani. Member Ekoff. Member Garcia. Member Hart. Member Kuduski. Member LaPlante. Member Ozog. Member Pachalsky. Member Renahan. Member Rutledge. Member Shorzy. Member Solman. Member Tornatori. And Member Zay.
Thank you for that housekeeping matter. We move on to the next order of business entitled Finance. Member, uh, Member Chaplin.
Thank you, Chairman. I move approval of FIR 022622, resolution, additional appropriation of the Stop School Violence Program, $62,525.
There's been a motion, and it was already seconded by Member Desart. Mr. Chad, please call the roll.
Member Chaplin.
Aye.
Member Chavez. Member Covert.
Aye.
Member Desart. Member DeCiani. Member Ekoff. Member Garcia. Member Hart. Member Kuduski. Member LaPlante. Member Ozog. Member Pachalsky. Member Renahan. Member Rutledge. Member Shorzy. Member Solman. Member Tornatori. And Member Zay.
Thank you, Member Chaplin.
Thank you, Chairman. I move approval of FIR 022722, resolution, acceptance and appropriation of the Coroner's Certificate Fee Grant in the amount of $5,130.
Leave is granted, Member Chaplin.
Thank you. I move approval of FIR 022822, resolution, additional appropriation for the County Infrastructure Fund Accounting Unit 1161 to accommodate additional costs related to mobile command posts, the amount of $20,580.
Leave is granted.
I move approval of FIR 022922, resolution, additional appropriation for the Conservation and Recreation Fund, Wetland Mitigation Bake Oak Meadows, $53,788.
Leave is granted.
I move approval of FIR 023122, resolution, bank depositories.
Leave is granted.
Thank you. I move approval of FIR 023222, resolution, 2023 Holiday Schedule.
Leave is granted.
Move approval of FIR 023622, resolution, authorization of the memorandum of understanding with AFSMI, ARPA item.
Leave is granted.
Move approval of FIR 023722, resolution, additional appropriation for the County Infrastructure Fund in the amount of $66,548 Sheriff's Office.
Leave is granted.
Move approval of FIR 024422, resolution, additional appropriation for the ARPA Fund to conduct the disparity study analysis, 209,000, ARPA item.
We have a question for Member Desart.
I actually have a comment. Thank you, Chairman. I'd like to recognize and show appreciation to Member Julie Renahan, who has been advocating for this important initiative since she was elected to the board back in 2018. It has only been through Member Renahan's advocacy for this expanded contracting of businesses owned by minorities and women that the chairman finally agreed to establish a Diversity and Inclusion Committee to work toward finally seeing Member Renahan's vision to fruition. So I just want to spotlight and thank Member Renahan. From your important initiative to finally having an established committee home, this work can finally be accomplished. So thank you, Member Renahan.
Thank you. Yes, yeah, thank you. Yes, and the great, you know, and the committee did a great job. The Diversity, Disparity Committee did a great job. Anthony's work on this, too, to be commended. Everybody, you know, it is, it was a good team effort. So everybody, everybody did a really great job.
But Julie started the ball rolling.
She did, yes, she did.
Okay. There's been a motion and a second, and a request for leave. Leave is granted.
Okay. We move on to FIR 024122, resolution, additional appropriation for the ARPA Fund for the Local American Rescue Plan Act for Park Districts in the amount of $1,874,485, ARPA item.
Leave is, leave is granted.
Yes, thank you. Move approval of FIR 024022, resolution, additional appropriation of the ARPA Fund for the American Rescue Plan Act program for fire districts, the amount of $3,123,916, ARPA item.
Leave is granted.
I move approval of FIR 024322, additional appropriation for the ARPA Fund for the netitorium, the amount of $150,000, ARPA item.
Yeah, we, the composition of the board has changed. Member Chavez is seeking recognition. Member Chavez.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to thank Member Kuduski for bringing this to the board, for bringing it to the Economic Development Committee, for Greg Betalov meeting, for Beth Marquette getting this together. This was a great group effort, and we got this done really quickly. This is going to drive a lot of economic development in the area, encouraging out-of-state tournaments to come to our area, which will see a great sales tax revenue for this. So I think this is such a big win for the county overall. We're going to be seeing national events come in. We've got such a great resource and facility here, but it really was a team and group effort. I want to thank staff and the State's Attorney's Office for really turning this around so quickly because we had bids that needed to go out within the next few weeks. And so this really happened in less than a month, and I think that really shows how quickly we can work here in DuPage County and get the good work done for the people. So thank you.
Okay. Further discussion? Is there a motion? And a second? Mr. Chad, please call the roll.
Member Chaplin.
Aye.
Member Chavez. Member Covert. Member Desart. Member DeCiani. Member Ekoff. Member Garcia. Member Hart. Member Kuduski. Member LaPlante. Member Ozog. Member Pachalsky. Member Renahan. Member Rutledge. Member Shorzy. Member Solman. Member Tornatori. And Member Zay.
Okay, thank you. Member Chaplin.
Thank you. I move approval of FIR 024622, resolution approving intergovernment agreement with DuPage County Park Districts for the use of ARPA funds, the amount of $1,874,485.
Wait a minute, didn't we already? Oh, yeah, 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 I'm sorry. Yes, leave is granted. Please proceed.
Thank you. I move approval of FIR 023922, resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement with DuPage County Fire Districts for the use of ARPA funds of Local American Rescue Plan Act, the amount of $3,123,916.
I feel like we're doing the same exact thing over.
This is fire districts. We did park district, no fire districts.
Ah, thank you. Ashley explained it to me. Leave is granted. Member Chaplin.
I move approval of FIR 024522, resolution approving the use of ARPA funds for the FMC and netitorium in the amount of $150,000.
Leave is granted, Member Chaplin.
Thank you. I move approval of FIR 024222, budget transfers, 614, 2022, various companies and accounting units.
Leave is granted.
Move approval of FIP 019222, recommendation for the approval of a contract purchase order to CH Advisors to conduct a disparity study analysis for the period of June 4, 2022 through November 30, 2023, for the Finance Department for a contract, total amount not to exceed $209,000, ARPA item.
Leave is granted, Member Chaplin.
Thank you. And finally, I move approval of change order FIP 0027A22, recommendation for the approval of an amendment to resolution FIP 002722 for a change order amending purchase order 5607 issued to Rock Fusco and Connolly LLC to provide continuing legal services as special assistant state attorney in the, in an additional amount to not exceed $150,000 resulting in an amended total amount not to exceed $300,000.
No. Okay, we have Member Desart seeking recognition.
Thank you. I would actually, Chairman, I, this is a doubling of this legal fee, and we are going to be discussing this legal issue in executive session. So I would like to make a motion to table this item until after executive session. So we can hear the information before we approve or not approve the increase.
Seems appropriate to me. Is there any objection? There's been a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those nay, the ayes have it. We'll put it on the table for now, and we'll come back to it in executive session. Anything further, Member Chaplin?
That concludes my report.
Okay. That concludes the report on finance. We move to the order of business entitled Development. Member Sam Tornatori.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. I would move approval of DCO 33-20, ordinance zoning 2220. This is an approval of a conditional use for a planned development, allowing an exception to allow a building to be detached, an exception to allow for a person living in the accessory dwelling unit to be less than 62 years old.
Okay, let the record reflect that we're looking at a different composition of board members here. So there's been a motion. Is there a second? Seconded by Member Chaplin. Mr. Chad, please call the roll.
Member Tornatori.
Aye.
Member Zay. Member Chaplin.
Aye.
Member Chavez. Member Covert.
Aye.
Member Desart. Member DeCiani. Member Ekoff. Member Garcia. Member Hart. Member Kuduski. Member LaPlante. Member Ozog. Member Pachalsky. Member Renahan. Member Rutledge. Member Shorzy. And Member Solman.
Okay, I think we have the requisite number of votes, right, sir? Okay. Member Tornatori.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move approval of DCO 34-22, ordinance zoning 2221, zoning hearing officer's approval of a conditional use to allow an existing shed to remain.
There's been a motion and a second. Mr., Mr. Deputy Clerk, please call the roll.
Member Tornatori.
Aye.
Member Zay. Member Chaplin.
Aye.
Member Chavez. Member Covert.
Aye.
Member Desart. Member DeCiani. Member Ekoff. Member Garcia. Member Hart. Member Kuduski. Member LaPlante. Member Ozog. Member Pachalsky. Member Renahan. Member Rutledge. Member Shorzy. And Member Solman.
Thank you, sir. Member Tornatori.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move approval of DCO 35-22, ordinance zoning 2224, zoning hearing officer's recommendation approve a conditional use to increase the maximum attached accessory building area from the permitted 975 square feet to approximately 1,632 square feet.
Leave is granted, Member Tornatori.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move approval of DCO 36-22, ordinance zoning 2214, approval of a conditional use for a planned development for a proposed remodeling in addition to an existing car wash, including exceptions of a rear building setback, north side setback, as well as a north side setback from 30 feet to approximately zero, for pavement and drive aisles. This was denied at the ZBA. However, the Development Committee did approve it unanimously. It does not require a supermajority.
Leave is granted.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Tornatori. A fine report. On to the order of environmental, Member Sheila Rutledge.
Thank you, Chairman. Just a, I don't know what time zone I'm in. I just came back from Europe yesterday, and I just want to point out some of the differences that I noticed through our partners with SCAR. She said she travels vicariously through others that report how other countries do with recycling, and I have to say that I was impressed with what they do from a public transportation to recycling to sustainable things. And I've got some ideas to bring to the Environmental Committee, so overall, I think they're doing a better job than we are, frankly. So we need to improve on that.
Where were you? Nice. Very nice. Good for you. Okay, thank you for that fine report. On to the order of Health and Human Services, Member Renahan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move approval of HHSP 0188-22, recommendation for approval of a contract prescription supply for secondary pharmaceuticals. This is for the Care Center, June 19, 2022 through June 18, 2023, for the pharmacy, not to exceed $60,000.
There's been a motion and a second. Mr. Chad, please call the roll.
Member Renahan.
Aye.
Member Rutledge. Member Shorzy. Member Solman. Member Tornatori. Member Zay. Member Chaplin.
Aye.
Member Chavez. Member Covert.
Aye.
Member Desart. Member DeCiani. Member Ekoff. Member Garcia. Member Hart. Member Kuduski. Member LaPlante. Member Ozog. And Member Pachalsky.
Okay, thank you. Member Renahan.
Thank you. I move approval of HHSP 0189-22, approval of contract with Cardinal Health, Inc. for primary pharmaceuticals for inpatient outpatient pharmacy services for the Care Center, July 1, 2022 through June 30, 23, 23, not to exceed $2.4 million, and this is per MMCP infused.
Leave is granted. Member Renahan.
I move approval of an authorization for overnight travel for the Weatherization Supervisor to attend a workshop in Springfield, June 21, 22, 2022, for $308.50.
Leave is granted.
Thank you. And I approve, move approval of the Community Services Director to go to the annual NACO
Thank you. And I approve move approval of uh the Community Services Director to go to the annual NACO Conference and Board of Directors meeting in Adams County, Colorado, June, July twentieth, twenty-two, through July twenty-fifth, twenty-two.
Leave is granted.
Three thousand three hundred thirty-four dollars and fifty cents.
Leave is granted. Thank you. We move on to the next order of business, Judicial Public Safety, Member Rannahan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, in terms of a committee update, we had an excellent presentation by Kimberly Verest last week. She's the Alternative Dispute Resolution Administrator at the Circuit Court. Um, we got to hear about the eviction mediation program successes and the contributions and collaborations, great work being done by our court, uh, pre-state legal aid and our community services group. So so excellent that we can support residents, both landlords and tenants, uh, with court-based rental assistance. And DuPage County is still leading the state in terms of getting money out to help all parties, so that's exciting news. Um, additionally, I just wanted to mention, uh, we did have some discussion in JPS, and I think this is probably going across the board and committees in terms of difficulties of uh supply chain and procurement. Circuit Court Clerk, as you'll see, had three vendors that we had to pull for, to looking for IT parts and also we had an issue with the, the Command Center for Merit and the truck uh that's, we're going to vote on um under JPS. So I think we need to have conversations continuing. I know JPS we did and I, I, I'm glad that we did. So with that, um, item thirteen A was pulled by the Circuit Court Clerk, so moving to thirteen B, I move approval of JPSP zero one seven-seven dash twenty-two. A contract with Justice Tex Inc. for purchase of audio visual evidence management software licenses, July first, twenty twenty-two through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three for the public defender, not to exceed forty thousand.
Uh, there's been a motion and a second. Uh, Mr. Chad, please call the roll.
Member Rannahan.
Aye.
Member Rutledge. Member Shorzy. Member Solomon. Member Tornatore. Member Zay. Member Chaplin.
Aye.
Member Chavez. Member Covert.
Aye.
Member Desart. Member De Ciani. Member Akoff. Member Garcia. Member Hart. Member Kudjuski. Member LaPlante. Member Ozog. And Member Pachalsky.
Thank you. Member Rannahan.
Thank you. I move approval of JPSP zero one seven-nine dash twenty-two, recommendation for approval of a contract purchase order to Motorola Solutions for seven watch guard in can, in car camera systems, evidence storage and support for inmate transport bands for the sheriff, not to exceed fifty-three thousand ninety-five dollars.
Leave is granted, Member Rannahan.
Thank you. Um, I move to combine items thirteen D, E, and F. These are all uh contracts for laptops and computer accessories. They are all valued at fifty-five thousand and they all dated June fourteenth, twenty twenty-two through June thirteenth, twenty twenty-three for the Circuit Court Clerk.
Leave is granted.
Thank you.
Is there a motion and a, oh, uh, forgive me. I'm getting a weather update here. Um, power outages across the county, yes. Yes, we're getting it back on slowly but surely. Um, so there's been a motion to combine, uh, and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those nay, the ayes have it.
Thank you. Uh, I move approval of JPSP zero one eight-oh dash twenty-two, purchase, purchase order to SHI International Corp., JPSP zero one eight-one dash twenty-two purchase order to Insight Public Sector, and JPSP zero one eight-two dash twenty-two is uh CDW Government.
Leave is granted, Member Rannahan.
Move approval of JPSP zero one nine-three dash twenty-two, recommendation for approval of a contract to Griffin Ford for purchase of one twenty twenty-one Ford F two fifty Super Duty.
Leave is granted.
Various trailers including the total containment vessel for the sheriff's office, not to exceed sixty-six thousand five hundred and forty-eight dollars.
Leave is granted.
Thank you. And I move approval of change order JPSP zero one five-two A dash twenty-two, approval amendment to resolution JPSP zero one five-two dash twenty-two. Um, this is a contract to LDV Inc. to provide mobile command posts for the sheriff's office and merit uh for vehicle for safe, effective, and efficient on scene operational needs for long-term and complex investigations and incident responses to increase the contract by twenty thousand five hundred and eighty dollars.
Leave is granted.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. A fine report. Onto the order of legislative, Member Dawn Desart.
Thank you, Chairman. As always, I'd like to thank our valuable lobbyists in Springfield, Chip Humes, Dave Sullivan, and Mark Polas for keeping us constantly updated on what's happening in Springfield. Last week, Governor Pritzker signed the Medicaid Omnibus HB forty-three forty-three. The package includes providing continuous eligibility for adults, increasing reimbursement for prenatal and postpartum care, and expanded coverage for immigrant adults. In opioid legislation, Governor Pritzker signed a package of bills aimed at addressing the opioid crisis under SB twenty-five thirty-five, pharmacists and those who prescribe opioids are required now to inform patients of the addictive nature of the drugs and that the patient has the option to request an opioid-free pain medication instead, which I think is brilliant. The governor signed SB one-two-three-three, creating a Blue Ribbon Commission on Transportation Infrastructure and Policy. And important to note that one hundred second Illinois General Assembly will convene in the fall veto session. Dates came out last week, November fifteenth through the seventeenth and November twenty-ninth through December first. In Washington, a House Select Committee is holding public televised hearings detailing its investigation into the January sixth, twenty twenty-one attack of the U.S. Capitol. The first hearing took place Thursday and lasted ninety minutes. The second hearing was held yesterday. There's also a hearing scheduled for tomorrow at nine AM, Thursday at nine AM, and a week from today at nine AM, a final hearing in primetime on Thursday, June twenty-third at seven PM. Finally, the Legislative Committee is not meeting today due to a special call finance meeting at one o'clock this afternoon to discuss a resolution directing the County Development Committee to develop an adult-use cannabis permitting licensing program within unincorporated DuPage County. However, in the wake of the devastating gun violence at a Buffalo, New York grocery store and at a Uvalde, Texas school, members of the Legislative Committee have requested that at our next meeting, we discuss the possibility of DuPage County supporting common sense gun reform legislation through our, our federal lobbyist, Bill Viney. Bills under consideration are HR forty-four twenty-three Gun Theft Prevention Act, HR thirty-eight-eight, the Untraceable Firearms Act, HR twenty-five-ten, the Keep Americans Safe Act, HR eight, a bipartisan background checks act, HR seventeen fifty-two, a cool-off act, HR seven forty-eight, Ethan's Law, HR eighteen oh eight, an assault weapons ban, HR forty-one eighteen, the Break-Up Psycho Violence Act, HR thirty-five oh nine, the Safe Gun Storage Act, HR thirty-four eighty, the Extreme Risk Protection Act, HR thirty-nine twenty-nine, the Disarm Hate Act to reduce gun violence and prevent hate crimes, HR eight twenty-five, the Gun Violence Prevention Research Act, HR fifty-six seventy-eight, the Firearms Retailer Code of Conduct Act. And that one is to establish business practices and certification requirements for gun shop owners and their employees. And finally, HR fifteen sixty, the Resources for Victims of Gun Violence Act to establish an interagency advisory council that would gather and distribute resources for victims of gun violence. This list is not exhausted exhaustive by any means. If there are other bills under the umbrella of common sense gun reform, I invite you to our next meeting to discuss this vital issue. Thank you.
Uh, onto the order of public works, Member Ozog.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move to approve FMP zero one ninety twenty-two, recommendation for the approval of a contract to Tri-Dim Filter Corporation to furnish and deliver HEPA ninety-nine point ninety-seven percent filters for JTK Administration Building for Facilities Management for a total contract amount not to exceed sixty-five thousand seventy-three dollars and seventy-five cents per lowest responsible bid.
Is there a representation that these filters can help clean the air from COVID? Do you know?
I do not. These are the standard filters that we've always operated with, so that's why they're also not considered ARPA items.
Okay, any discussion? There's been a motion and a second. Mr. Chad, please call the roll.
Member Ozog.
Yes.
Member Pachalsky. Member Rannahan. Member Rutledge.
Aye.
Member Shorzy. Member Solomon. Member Tornatore. Member Zay. Member Chaplin.
Aye.
Member Chavez. Member Covert.
Aye.
Member Desart. Member De Ciani. Member Akoff. Member Garcia. Member Hart. Member Kudjuski. And Member LaPlante.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Member Ozog. Onto the order of stormwater, Member Zay.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. For committee updates, uh, the DuPage County Management Planning Committee voted last week to approve recipients of the American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA municipal grant program. Uh, these grants award a fifty-fifty cost share up to five hundred thousand dollars for shovel-ready projects that demonstrate flood protection and resilience measures. During a two-month grant period, DuPage County received thirty-one ARPA grant applications from eighteen municipalities with a total request of nine point six seven million for projects totaling forty-eight point five million. The committee awarded more than eight million to twenty-six selected projects that will improve flood control and water quality countywide. Every county board district and almost every major watershed receive funding for projects. The staff is now working on the IGAs with each of the recipients, which will be brought to the board for final approval in the coming months. Uh, I want to thank our staff for their outstanding job of reviewing these applications and uh making sure all of these uh projects met the ARPA funding qualifications. Uh, besides this, the department will soon be releasing details on our township grant program, which will be giving townships up to a million dollars for drainage and stormwater projects that meet the ARPA funding. Just want to thank our staff for that and uh again, great project, using money uh through our ARPA funding to help uh flooding throughout the county.
Thank you for that update, Member Desart seeking recognition.
Thank you. Member Zay, can I just ask a question? I know that in my, my park district, the Naperville Park District, has about a million dollars in stormwater um work that they need to get done. Would that, it, it just include townships or would that also include park districts?
That'll be for townships.
Would you be open to have it include park districts?
I think there's a discussion we should have because, you know, I know we're doing a lot with our, our funding and municipality's got a lot, a lot of ARPA funding also and, you know, they could also be participating with their local park districts on that matter. I think we've been fair to all of the different bodies here throughout the county. I don't know where we draw a line at this point. Those projects that we, that Naperville did do will have impacts on, that they got funding for will have impacts on their park districts and school districts.
Right, okay. Thank you for the discussion.
Sure, thank you. Uh, with that, Mr. Chairman, I move on SMR two thirty twenty-two, recommendation to enter into an intergovernmental agreement between DuPage County and Village of Downers Grove for uh water quality project amount of sixteen thousand six hundred eighty-seven dollars.
There's been a motion and a second. Mr. Chad, please call the roll.
Member Zay.
Aye.
Member Chaplin.
Aye.
Member Chavez. Member Covert.
Aye.
Member Desart. Member De Ciani. Member Akoff. Member Garcia. Member Hart. Member Kudjuski. Member LaPlante. Member Ozog. Member Pachalsky. Member Rannahan. Member Rutledge. Member Shorzy. Member Solomon. And Member Tornatore.
Thank you. Member Zay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move on SMP one seventy-eight eight twenty-two, approval contract issued to Atlas Engineering Group on call land, uh, land surveying services amount of seventy thousand dollars. Uh, this is an ARPA item.
Leave is granted.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Zay. Onto the order of transportation, Member Don Pachalsky.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. I'd move to approve DTP zero one nine-one dash twenty-two, a recommendation approval contract to AT&amp;T Corp. to provide telecommunications service as needed to DuPage Division of Transportation-owned traffic signals not to exceed forty thousand dollars.
There's been a motion and a second. Mr. Chad, please call the roll.
Member Pachalsky.
Aye.
Member Rannahan. Member Rutledge. Member Shorzy. Member Solomon. Member Tornatore. Member Zay. Member Chaplin.
Aye.
Member Chavez. Member Covert.
Aye.
Member Desart. Member De Ciani. Member Akoff. Member Garcia. Member Hart. Member Kudjuski. Member LaPlante. And Member Ozog.
Thank you. Member Pachalsky.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Move to approve DTP zero one eight-four dash twenty-two, recommendation approval contract to Superior Asphalt Materials LLC to furnish and deliver UPM Acumenous Cold Patch for contract not to exceed fifty-six thousand dollars.
Leave is granted.
Move to approve DTP zero one eight-five dash twenty-two, a recommendation approval contract to Parsons Transportation Group for the central signal system support services for the Department of Transportation net to exceed one hundred thousand dollars.
Leave is granted.
Move to approve DTP zero one eighty-six dash twenty-two, recommendation approval contract to Trans Systems Corporation for construction engineering services for the central signal system expansion not to exceed seven hundred thousand dollars.
Leave is granted.
Now, move, move to approve DTP zero one eight-three dash twenty-two, recommendation approval contract Chicago Testing Laboratory for professional geotechnical material engineering services not to exceed fifty thousand dollars.
Leave is granted.
Move to approve DTP zero one eight-seven dash twenty-two, recommendation approval contract FGM Architects for professional architectural and engineering services for replacement of the Division of Transportation maintenance building not to exceed one million six hundred and sixty-four thousand six hundred and twenty-two dollars.
Leave is granted.
And lastly, Mr. Chairman, move to approve change order DTP oh two eleven C dash nineteen amendment to a resolution issued to Civil Tech Engineering to provide professional primary engineering services for improvements on Belmont to Finley Road to Ogden Avenue cross street and a contract amount of fifty-seven thousand one hundred and twenty-eight thousand twenty-four cents resulting in a total contract of three hundred sixteen thousand two hundred ninety-six thousand four cents.
Leave is granted. Thank you, Mr. Pachalsky. Onto the order of business entitled Discussion uh under Public Act ninety-nine zero six four six, Pension Obligation Projections Required by the Local Government Wage Increase Transparency Act. Anyone seeking recognition on this order of business? Seeing none, hearing none. We move on to the next order of business entitled Old Business. Old Business, Member Garcia.
Yeah, I just wanted to give a little kudos to staff. Uh, I had an intergovernmental meeting uh last week and we talked about uh EV vehicles and the ongoing sustainability that we're bringing to the county. And uh, but talking to staff, I know we're going to be doing a thing. I know uh as of July first, there's going to be a rebate for anybody considering buying an electric vehicle and that will be me, Member Zay. So so I just want to give those, uh, if you look on our website underneath uh the uh Building and Zoning Department and under Environmental Division, there is a lot of information there about electric vehicles and electrical vehicle charging stations. And so it's a really good place if people want to get more information about what they uh can do in the future to try to uh become more sustainable. Thank you.
Did you know that Argon National Laboratories, right here in DuPage County, played a central role in developing that, uh, those batteries? I mean, I remember going there years ago and seeing some of the earliest prototypes. Okay, where were we? Old Business. Member, Member Covert seeking recognition. Forgive me. Sadia, please proceed.
Thank, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I, I would first like to, um, just from uh last week and all the time, all, you know, for the last three and a half years that I've been here, um, I do want to thank our wonderful staff members for working so hard and sometimes really long hours uh in supporting us and providing us with uh what we need. Um, I know they, you know, they, they really bend over backwards for us, so I really want to give a shout out to staff for just their dedication and hard work um to make our county board function properly. Um, also, um, I want to thank you Chairman Cronin for selecting um great candidates uh from diverse communities. Um, and I witnessed this the first year. You selected a lot of uh great candidates with merit from diverse communities, um, you know, the Hispanic, Latino community, African-American, um Muslim communities, so many wonderful diverse communities out here. And um you really, you know, practice what you preach. You implemented our values here at uh DuPage County and I really have, uh, I have uh very high respect for that. Um, what I wanted to say was, uh, this was an issue that was brought up last week. David Andalseo's name was brought up as the director of our RTA before. Um, and, you know, there were some things uh that were said that I, I didn't really um agree with. And I, I just wanted everybody to know that I, you know, uh, majority of us, including me, supported uh David Andalseo and he is the CEO of Windalco Enterprises. And I was very proud to support, you know, uh, a member of our, you know, wonderful Hispanic uh community out here and uh he has done so much great work. Um, he's, he's really been an asset to DuPage County and he's moved his company out here to DuPage and I want to thank him for that, for providing two hundred plus jobs out here. And, you know, in, in addition to, you know, his leadership for over forty years, um, I want to thank him for his charitable and community service that I don't think a lot of people know. He's donated, um, you know, laptops, so many laptops to College of DuPage and um Child City School, Musharkinville School District. You know, thirty-five thousand dollars plus cash donation to College of DuPage Foundation uh scholarships, sponsored several fundraiser events for COD Foundation. Um, he donated uh dozens of snow pants and boots to Lehman Middle School in West Chicago. Um, he facilitated the donations of eighty thousand pounds of chicken and beef and twenty thousand pounds of rice for community, for a community event at Wheaton Bible Church. So I think, you know, when we see this type of great work from people here in DuPage, I think it should be recognized and it should be appreciated and we really do value um all of our constituents and residents and business owners and everybody here at DuPage County and we welcome them. So, thank you. That's all I want to say.
Well, I couldn't agree with you more. I think Mr. Andalseo is a remarkable person, wonderful citizen. We're so fortunate to have him representing us on the We're so fortunate to have him represented us on the RTA Board, Latino Leadership Council Leader, charitable, I think he was a Biden delegate, so demonstrates our commitment to not only diversity but also to bipartisanship. So couldn't agree with you more, Member Covert. He's a remarkable citizen and person and DuPage County resident, so we're very fortunate to have his services. Anything further on the Order of Old Business? Mr. Krajewski.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. I didn't have anything under Animal Services on the agenda, but I just want to bring one thing up. Saturday, kind of ironic, we hosted at the DuPage Historical Museum, we hosted a volunteer appreciation day for all the volunteers that put time in out at Animal Services. So it was a nice presentation, a nice thank you to the work that they did. For last year, the total volunteer hours was well over 31,000 hours, which based on their national statistics, that equates to just under $1 million of compensated time for all the volunteer work. So I want to, again, recognize all those volunteers. Animal Services staff has done a great job in building the foster program. They did a presentation on the new building that has been approved. There's a lot of excitement amongst the volunteers who spend a lot of time over there and actually had some input into the new facility. So again, I want to thank all these volunteers in DuPage County. If anybody is interested in volunteering, you know, you can follow Animal Services, but well over 31,000 hours last year.
That's remarkable. Animal Services is such a gem for us here at the county and so proud of all the good work they do.
And, oh, Member Desart, Vice Chair, was not feeling well, so she couldn't make it, but, uh, Member Garcia.
Garcia.
Yeah, I tested positive for COVID, so I wasn't able to attend, but I had Member Garcia go in my stead.
Yep.
Well, thank you.
Happily so.
Thank you. Anything else on the Order of Old Business? Mr. DeCiani.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was wondering if the State's Attorney had any answer to the question I had posed at the last county board meeting regarding some of our commissioners that are appointed by the county board engaging in political activity. Was there any reply on that? Because I'm all for people donating, et cetera, but when they're also contributing tens of thousands to people's campaigns and they're appointed by us, it looks like that might not be appropriate or proper, so that was my question.
Sure. You should have received an email, but the Ethics Commission has already ruled on that, on that issue, and just recently, so I forwarded that to you. I don't know why you didn't receive it. But it's absolutely permissible to do so.
It's permissible for somebody that we appoint to engage in political activity.
It is.
And donate, et cetera, to...
Okay.
You might want to consider changing our policies if that's the case, so, but thank you for...
Okay. We'll get right on that. Anything further on the Order of Old Business? Moves to the next order of business entitled New Business. Member Desart.
Thank you. I just, bees, butterflies, and other animals, I don't want to step on your toes.
Pollinators.
Pollinators, absolutely. Pollinate crops and plants, and in Illinois, they're vanishing at a rapid rate, unfortunately. Portions of Aurora are in DuPage County, so I wanted to let you know that not this Saturday, but the next Saturday, June 25th, from 1:00 to 6:00, they're having their inaugural Pollinator Festival. There's going to be activities for children, educational programs, a farmer's market, food trucks, a beer garden, plant and seed sales, and a milkweed giveaway for these pollinators. Again, it's at Phillips Park Zoo in Aurora on Saturday, June 25th, from 1:00 to 6:00. If you appreciate pollinators, you might want to go out and celebrate at the festival. Thank you.
Yeah. Yes, Member Chaplin.
Thank you. And I just wanted to remind the board, we do have a special call meeting at 1:00, but also that Monday, June 20th, the county will be closed in celebration of Juneteenth, which I think we're really making progress, that it's very important to recognize that holiday, and I'm very proud that we are recognizing it. Thank you.
Anyone else on the Order of New Business? New Business. Member Covert seeking recognition. There she is. I have to turn her around.
Sorry, second time. No, I'm looking, I was really looking forward to the special call meeting at 1:00. I just wanted everybody to know I want to be there. I won't be able to make it. I'm on a family emergency, actually, out in Tennessee right now. But I do look forward to the meeting minutes and notes and reviewing all that, so it's going to be a very important discussion. So I wish I could be there, but I have a family emergency, unfortunately, so just want to let everyone know.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. DeCiani.
Thank you. Chairman, I wanted to thank you for mentioning the passing of Jim Ryan, our former Illinois Attorney General, former DuPage County State's Attorney. I had the honor of being with him for much of this past week while he was on hospice at home, and he's a true courageous fighter for the people of the state, for law enforcement, for what's right, for our children. He turned his personal tragedies, losing his daughter and losing his son, into positive things. The Andy Ryan run raised millions of dollars for Midwest Children's Brain Tumor at War Lutheran General, and his loss of his son raised millions of dollars for the loss program for Catholic charities. What he has done for children, including building our children's center here at DuPage County and setting the model for the state on how we prosecute child sex offenders and support children, is a national model. The guy, the guy is a legend and a mentor to me and a motivator for me to serve. So I just want to make mention of his great service and his family, and Marie, and the kids. It's a tragic loss for this county and for the state of Illinois, but we love the Ryans and I definitely wanted to make sure that he's recognized, and I appreciate you recognizing him earlier today, too. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else on the Order of New Business? Seeing none, hearing none. We do have an item to come before us in executive session, so I will entertain a motion to reorganize ourselves into executive session. Been a motion and a second pursuant to Open Meetings Act 5, ILCS 120/2C11, pending litigation. We will organize ourselves. There's been a motion and a second. Mr. Deputy Clerk, Mr. Chad, please call the roll.
Member Chaplin.
Aye.
Member Chavez.
Aye.
Member Covert.
Aye.
Member Desart.
Aye.
Member DeCiani.
Aye.
Member Eckoff.
Aye.
Member Garcia.
Aye.
Member Hart.
Aye.
Member Krajewski.
Aye.
Member LaPlante.
Aye.
Member Ozog.
Aye.
Member Pachalski.
Aye.
Member Renahan.
Aye.
Member Rutledge.
Aye.
Member Schwartzie.
Aye.
Member Solomon.
Aye.
Member Tornatori.
Aye.
And Member Zay.
Aye.
Okay, so we're going to, I'd like to get into this as soon as we can. We do have a technological process. Thank you. Thank you. So, yeah, please don't go far. Let's get back here in about five, six minutes. Mr. Don. And that's with respect to the Rock, Fusco, and Connolly. What order of business was that? Okay, Members, Renahan, you want to take that back up?
Chaplin.
Chaplin.
Yeah.
Forgive me. It was Finance. Somebody said JP.
Yes.
Yes, Finance.
Yes.
So there you go, Mr. Ms. Finance Chairman.
Do we need to take a roll call to get back in or anything, or are we okay? We just did, okay, okay. That was adjourned.
All right, we're going to do an attendance roll to be doubly secret.
Just to be sure.
Probation secure. Mr. Deputy Clerk, please call the roll.
Member Chaplin.
Here.
Member Chavez.
Aye.
Member Covert.
Aye.
Member Desart.
Here.
Member DeCiani.
Aye.
Member Eckoff.
Here.
Member Garcia.
Here.
Member Hart.
Aye.
Member Krajewski.
Aye.
Member LaPlante.
Aye.
Member Ozog.
Aye.
Member Pachalski.
Aye.
Member Renahan.
Aye.
Member Rutledge.
Aye.
Member Schwartzie.